I am calling the meeting order, Clark Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Brazziano?
Here.
Notari?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Trivolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Here, sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 7th editions of the Bellville Times and Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Town Hall bulletin board and copies on file and municipal papers published.
Glad to hear it.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic of which we stand, to the Constitution of our own country.
Okay, everybody, I'd like to welcome you all to our second meeting in November. Before we get on with the general business of the township, we do have a presentation. I do see that we have the guests of honor here with us today. With that being said, I'm gonna pass it over to Councilman Razzano or Cazarelli. To Councilman Razzano.
So, I, uh, Vinnie honored a couple of firemen a while back, and I felt that we had a couple more that we needed to honor, especially since they had extraordinary service here. I know you guys do a great job, but this was above, well above and beyond, so... I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it. Kelly did a nice thing and made it a nice readable fashion for me. Whereas on May 18th, 2022, firefighters James Judge and Steve Massoud responded to an EMS call for a man bleeding from his neck. And whereas the responding firefighters found a man alone in a field with a 10-inch laceration on his neck, under his chin, from ear to ear, the man was bleeding profusely but breathing unconscious. And whereas firefighter Judge, upon arrival, ran to the man and directed firefighter Massoud to bring a cervical collar. The cervical collar was applied with large amounts of gauze and bandages to hold pressure on the large wounds without choking the patient. And whereas, while firefighter Judge used this technique to allow the patient's neck to be stabilized and control, the bleeding and maintained his airway in preparation for transportation to University Hospital of Newark. And whereas, many of firefighters, judges, colleagues were impressed and the medics applauded him for knowing and thinking to use the technique with the cervical collar in this unique circumstance. The patient was delivered to the hospital in critical condition but alive and conscious, which is a miracle considering the extent of the injury and the amount of blood he lost. Whereas firefighter James Judge gave critical direction to his firefighter, Stephen Massoud, together, and that's a real key, "together," because we're a team, right? You guys did a phenomenal job together. Took extraordinary life-saving action during this sensitive and challenging call, now therefore being resolved by the mayor and municipal council of township of Bellville. We do hereby recognize and thank firefighters James Judge and Stephen Sood for their compassion and strong dedication to their profession as firefighters and wish them success in their careers with the Bellville Fire Department. And for your creativity, James, that's, that was great. God bless you both. Make sure I give you each one the right one. Same thing? Never mind.
Ex-police officer.
Yes. And his sister, his sister still is a police officer, right? And his sister is still a police officer. It's a family that can...
Oh, that's the first day. I don't think, I'm managing to work.
Steve, that was, this was first day.
First of all, that police training.
That's right.
We got a great service.
Somebody left because I worked a few more and wanted people to see.
Everybody loved the firemen, right?
Once again, congratulations. We're gonna move on with the rest of our meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda is the report of the manager.
Good evening, everyone. Let me start off by wishing everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Um, in the theme of the spirit of this time of the year, I wanted to just point something out to the mayor and council and to residents. If you come into Town Hall on Friday, you may see employees walking around in jeans. Um, that is not the normal first call that we have in place. But we have, for about the last year, we have put together, it's called Five Dollar Friday Jeans Day. And, um, in the last probably year, maybe even two years now, we probably raised over a thousand dollars to, um, and each month, it's a different course. So one month it may be breast cancer awareness month, one may be autism, one might be diabetes. And it's, uh, just a, we rally around and the employees, and it's, it's great morale and obviously we're accomplishing something very nice. Mayor, council, myself, received an email from a warrior. I call him a warrior because he's a nine-year-old hero. We've battled on cancer in town. His name is Alex. So, uh, tomorrow, believe it or not, we're doing a special one day because tomorrow is like the end of the week. We're doing a, a Wednesday for, for Alex, and we've already gotten over a hundred dollars donated for, uh, his, uh, his course. So it's, it's pretty, um, you know, it's, it's heartwarming during these type of, uh, especially this time of year because we're so thankful for our blessings and, uh, when you see our workforce chipping in and doing their part, it's very rewarding. The other thing I do want to share, uh, just in timing now that the winter is here. On Monday, we are suspending the parking meters on Washington Avenue. We do that every December for the shopping district, so to speak. And at the same time, we're suspending the alternate free parking on Monday. Uh, the cold temperatures are here, and, uh, that doesn't mean that it's not a nice day. Our street will be out. Obviously, we won't issue violations until we start up again. So hopefully, we're looking forward to the spring getting here sooner than later because the last couple of days have been extremely cold. And, uh, last thing I wanted to report to the council, as, as much as we're not awarding the contract tonight, we did go out to bid last week for the lead line replacements. Uh, the good news is we received 15 bids, so that, so that's a, a sense of a stronger bid. The bids ranged from 1.8 million dollars to 3.7. We're probably gonna come in right closer to the 1.8 when we award the contract at the next meeting. So just if you do some quick numbers, um, probably gonna come out 400, we'll be doing 400 units. Uh, it's probably about $45,000 a replacement, which is not bad at all. In fact, that's a very, very good price. Uh, you may remember we bonded $5 million for this project, so clearly we are under, underneath that threshold. Um, and, you know, when we talk about this lead line replacement program, you know, keep in mind, this is not, uh, this is a state mandate. We have been, uh, you know, we have been required as a mandate from the Department of Environmental Protection. But that's my report. Certainly available for any other questions that may arise.
Questions for the manager, anybody? So, uh, Mr. Manager, we just get that on social media and the website about the, uh, no parking, uh, free parking on Washington Avenue? And do we have, uh, can you give us an update maybe on, uh, I have no idea where we stand with registrations for, it was a baseball wrestling with our joint venture, shared service between the school district?
Yes, so Councilman Brazziano and myself just spoke about it briefly. We're off to a little slower start than we were hoping for, so, um, my first call tomorrow morning is to kind of light a fire behind everybody, so at the next council meeting, I'll actually have my registration.
Who, who are we lighting fires behind?
So, it's, it's smaller. No, like, right, so right now, it's our shared service journey agreement between, um, the board and us. So I just have to kind of have, uh, we have to have a little conference call to get everybody back on the same page. So hopefully I have some...
But we're actively taking...
Yes.
Who's taking those, those applications?
Also them. Well, that's what we have to talk about tomorrow because it's, right now, I believe it's a combination of both. And we have, somebody has to take a stronger lead on that. So, we, obviously, we want this shared service program to work.
It was a pilot, I mean...
So, but again, um, I'm confident that once we light a fire tomorrow, we'll be, we'll be back on, on pace.
Anybody else for the manager, based on his report? No? Okay, next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. Probably my shortest, uh, report of the mayor. Uh, so we had some past events. We recently had our Veterans Day weekend, our 5K race, uh, and our Veterans Day parade. Uh, I think we set a, a new record for participants during the 5K, which was great. Uh, Councilman Cazarelli, what, what, where did you come in? Your time was...
Wait, but Cazarelli did beat you, so...
So, uh, we had the 5K race. We had, I think, a hundred and, about 140 participants. Uh, I should say registrations, about 110 participants. It was a little chilly. Uh, it was raining when we first got there at 8:30 in the morning. Uh, and then we had our Veterans Day parade. Uh, I see two members of our parade committee are here, Ms. Gina Lombardi and Ms. Jackie Guaman. Thank you both for your dedicated service to our Veterans Day parade. Uh, it's always a fun event, uh, and having the school involved gets a lot of the parents and grandparents there, so it's definitely great, uh, and our veterans always feel honored by that. Uh, upcoming events, uh, next Friday is gonna be the Bellville Energy Assistance Day. Uh, information for that's on our website and social media. It's Friday, December 2nd, from 4 to 7 at the Senior Center. And the only other upcoming event that I have, uh, uh, I believe it'll be posted to our website and social media tomorrow, but our, uh, holiday spectacular and Christmas tree lighting is gonna be Saturday, December 10th, uh, at the high school. That's where our Christmas tree is. And we are one of the rare municipalities in State of Jersey that actually light a Christmas tree and not a holiday tree, uh, so we're very honored about that. It's always, the last couple of years, it's been a fantastic event. Uh, I know that the deputy mayor is bringing his chestnuts to roast them on an open fire. Uh, fire department has signed off on that, I'm told already, and, uh, that's gonna be a great... So that, that's our Christmas event. It's gonna be Saturday, December 10th. And chief is the police. Are they doing their own Christmas event? Or are they gonna, are they gonna join us this time? We would like you guys to join us.
They'll be there, but we're, we're gonna shine on our own.
The police are very welcome. The police are very welcome to join us, Jim. We are one municipality. Okay, I said it was gonna be a short one.
Mayor includes everybody out of these jokes. Don't eat food.
It's true.
A thousand people liked our Halloween school time.
Maybe next year, the police could just take it on, Mr. Manager.
We'll help the township out.
The police just do the whole thing.
Make it more school time.
Out of their budget and everything. Uh, lastly, I say quick mayor's report. Lastly, news, uh, Bellville was well represented at the league and municipalities. Uh, I actually had a speaking assignment, the first mayor in the history of Bellville, as the clerk tells me, to have a speaking assignment at the league. We kicked it off, uh, Tuesday at 2 o'clock. It was, it was a great event. Uh, very well received, by the way. And, uh, we also received an award for the green team. Uh, not the certified bronze one, but we received another award for the green team. Uh, we just applied for two more grants, uh, so the green team is up and moving. And last thing I want to say is I keep talking about the anchor program. Uh, the anchor program had a deadline of December 31st. That has now been extended to January 31st, 2023. Uh, I think I'm gonna be doing a mailing through my civic, uh, at least to the seniors in town. Let them know about the senior tax freeze and the anchor program. Uh, that's it for my report. Next item on the agenda is the approval minutes.
Combined conference, regular meeting, and motion, chief.
Second. We have a motion made in second. Clark Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trivolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Communications?
A letter received from Joseph R. Maradello, planning board attorney for the township of Bellville, stating that the 371-411 Main Street redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan of the township of Bellville.
Next.
The letter of resignation received from Nicole Netski, class C member of the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, ordinances for introduction.
Number one, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 3332 entitled, "In ordinance adopting rules and regulations governing the employment of police officers for extrajudicial details within the township of Bellville."
Need a motion?
Some movement. Sure.
We have a motion made in second. Clark Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trivolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one, ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Bellville, County of West Jersey, adopting the 371-411 Main Street redevelopment plan.
Motion over public?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public. Clark Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Trivolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
So we are currently open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. When, uh, you're called upon, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, Mr. Sheldon.
Uh, before I get started, I just want to ask Mr. Iaccone if he could just distribute this and discuss what this is in line. By the way, I like your jacket tonight. It looks very much like, um, what the mayor of Amity from movie Jaws was wearing after the... Yes, it is. It's my favorite movie.
He was building a mayor in the second one too, so he did something.
All right, um, well, good evening, everyone. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Uh, I'd like to discuss this, uh, redevelopment plan for 371-411 Main Street, which is otherwise known as the Kmart property. Uh, I have given each of you, uh, a couple of pages of maps. The first one is actually a reproduction of the map from the CME, uh, study that was presented before the planning board, uh, 12 days ago on, on November 10th of this year. Uh, it's not a very good map, in my opinion, but I also have attached the actual official needs and balance for this property, uh, from New Jersey Property Records. That's the second image. And then the last image is a Google Earth image showing clearly the overall scale of the property, et cetera. I'll talk more about that in a moment. Uh, but firstly, I, the, I want everyone to be on the same page here. This particular property, the Kmart property, is a six, is a 5.95 acre plot, almost six acres, and it is situated between Giralliman Street, uh, Main Street, Stevens Street to the west, and Terry Street to the north. Kmart, uh, as many of us are aware, um, opened its doors in 1978, but unfortunately it closed its doors in April of last year. And the company, Kmart, is, uh, apparently officially in bankruptcy. Uh, but as far as, um, all of the available property tax records indicate, the Kmart Corporation, which is headquartered in Chicago, Illinois, is still the legal owner of the property. So the first thing I wanted to ask the governing body here, since you usually have more information than I do, um, to the best of your knowledge, has this property been acquired by any other parties or is it still legally the property of the Kmart Corporation? Can anyone here answer that question one way or the other? Or are you just assuming as I am that it still belongs to Kmart?
Uh, I don't believe it's been acquired, Mr. Manager. I don't believe it's been acquired. It's still the same owner as far as I'm concerned.
As far as, as everything that we have been part of, the ownership has not changed.
Okay, all right, that's good. I'm, that's my understanding as well. Again, as I said, the, uh, the owner of the, the property, according to multiple online records, uh, is, uh, Hoffman Estates, otherwise known as Box 927000, Kmart Corporation in Illinois, Chicago, Illinois. So, uh, we all agree that the property is still owned by the Kmart Corporation, which means that, um, and just as a matter of legal principle...
I, I'm not actually sure Kmart Corporation is the owner of the property. I believe it might be a long-term lease, and they had a long-term lease with the owner of the property, but I could be wrong.
All right, well...
But I don't think any of that really matters as far as the plans.
Well, but the property, uh, let's all agree that the property is still private property.
It is.
It's a long story. All right. So, uh, that leads me to the, the following, um, questions. The, the property is still private property, but yet, when the planning board had this hearing on November 12th, your, your, uh, they were discussing and they voted to approve this redevelopment plan. Um, it's a redevelopment plan and not an area in need of redevelopment declaration. In fact, if you read through the ordinance, which is a very short one, and I was going to read it into the record, but let me skip over the whereas's. But it says, "now therefore be ordained by the mayor and township council, the township of Bellville, etc., blah, 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 uh, being the governing body thereof pursuant to NJSA 4812A-7." The township council hereby accepts, approves, and adopts the rehabilitation plan. So this is expressly not an area in redevelopment declaration. An area in need, an ANOR declaration statutorily gives you then great sweeping powers to redevelop the property as you see fit. So, if I understand this ordinance correctly, as it's written, this is only, it's still a rehabilitation zone, just as every other parcel of land in the township is. This is not an ANOR property. This property has never been declared an area in need of redevelopment, which would be a predicate to then using your legal powers to declare it a combination area, which would then allow you to use eminent domain to purchase the property and then do as you see fit. So you're not anywhere near that. This is still a private property. You just have this concept of a redevelopment plan, but from what I understand of the law, in the municipal annuals law, you can't impose this redevelopment plan on the legal owners of the property. The, the property is still, still belongs to the Kmart Corporation. So I have to ask, are you knowingly violating your legal authority in trying to impose a redevelopment plan on property that you don't control, that you don't own? Because, well, in case those in the audience are not aware, I assume everyone on the council is. The plan, the...
We do, we do redevelopment plans all, we very rarely own, we, I'm unaware of any property the township has owned that we've actually done a redevelopment plan for.
Well, usually redevelopment plans follow after an ANOR declaration. This is unusual in that you're...
You still don't own it after an ANOR declaration? I've been here five years. We've never owned a piece of property and, and done a redevelopment plan.
That may very well be true, but you usually wind up declaring a piece of property in, in an area of redevelopment so that you can then bypass all the other procedures and allow...
I know we have Dean on the phone, our redevelopment attorney. Uh, I...
I thought we did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Steve, yeah. Mike, come on, please.
Because the property is in an area of rehabilitation, uh, we can't hear Dean, but because, and I'm sure Dean's gonna confirm this when I say it, um, because the property is in, in the area of, uh...
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation. The whole town is, the township has the authority under this statute to adopt a redevelopment plan in an area of rehabilitation.
He's on screen.
So, so, it's not this, you're right. Previously, the township has adopted redevelopment plans for areas of re, uh, areas in need of redevelopment. But the statutory language also allows redevelopment plan in an area in need of rehabilitation, and that's what they're doing. And it has the same effect as if redevelopment plan has the same, the same effect uh, in an area of rehabilitation than it does in an area of redevelopment.
It would just, it would seem...
That's our answer, Mr. Sheldon.
But it would seem to reason that if, if you can make such these ad hoc determinations of the, the, the legal owner of the property, the Kmart Corporation, they could be losing great value of their property by, which, in case those in the audience and those watching aren't aware of the fact, the redevelopment plan would necessarily involve taking the Kmart block, which is nearly six acres, and splitting it into four roughly even quarters. And in the process, a, a, an extension of Ralph Street would be made connecting from Giralliman to Terry Street, and another cross street would be, uh, made between Main Street and...
Mr. Sheldon, you're, you're basically telling us with your ordinance, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I have, yeah, a whole series of questions, but I want, I want to make sure that everyone...
We, we all know that you can do research. We all know you know who... Like, where is your...
I'm getting to it. I'm getting to it, but I, I want to make sure that everyone here is aware of what is being proposed with this redevelopment plan, that the Kmart block, its nearly six-acre extent, under this plan, is going to be split into...
But, Mr. Sheldon, I think the photo that everybody has seen, correct, everybody knows that.
I don't think, well...
Do you have a question about the ordinance or...
Look, how many of the, the nearly 40,000 residents in Bellville have actually seen this plan? I doubt that even probably less than, that, uh, most, even 500 people in this township are aware of what's being considered here. I would wager probably under 100. But, so, the, your, this redevelopment plan would, is seeking to split this large, very viable piece of land, which I don't think has, it has no environmental concerns, which is in a BB1 zone. By the way, the BB1 zone is a commercial retail zone. It expressly does not allow residential to, to be put on a property that's in the BB1 zone. It only allows retail and commercial usage, all right? So, that's something that's also important to point out. The, the current assessed value for this property is just under $10 million. So if you, if you were to move at some later point to, to take control of this property through eminent domain, the fair market value of it, because it is apparently an all-clean site...
Sheldon, I, I need you to stick to this ordinance, not pontificate about in the future if we buy it. I need you to have, do you have questions about this?
Right, yeah, I guess I am public...
You could use your time in public commenting to testify and give your opinions about it, but this is a time for questions.
Let me, let me proceed. Under the current zoning, under the BB1 zone, a store like Home Depot would currently be allowed to develop this site. That's a given, that, because that was, that was part of the discussion during the planning board meeting. Both the developer, both the planner from CME, Ms. Pooja Carter was present, but one of her colleagues was. And Mr. Venero got into a, a rather important, uh, discussion during the planning board meeting about this particular matter. And just for the sake of completion...
Mr. Sheldon?
Yes.
You, you eventually have to come to a question about this ordinance?
I am, but there are certain things that need to be, I want to play, it's only about 40 seconds. I want to play...
I, I don't know if this is a question. You playing something from the planning board meeting is not a question about this ordinance.
I need, I need to establish certain things...
Do that establishment at your public commenting. I need it, do you have it...
This is public comments. This is public, this is public comments about the ordinance.
About the ordinance, not about what happened at the planning board meeting.
But what happened at the planning board, you had a hearing about this very matter at the planning board meeting. What I'm about to play is directly relevant to what's being discussed tonight. So please, just give me the 30 seconds.
We, Mr. Sheldon, it's, it's, Mr. Sheldon, I, I...
We have the planning board's recommendation, okay? This is not about the planning board or what the planning board does.
Do you have a question about the ordinance?
Yes, let me continue. All right.
Continue, you haven't answered a question yet.
During, during the planning board meeting, the, the planner acknowledged that the primary reason for this redevelopment plan was to stop a big box store. And Mr. Venero then asked her, would this stop a Home Depot from breaking ground and, and establishing the presence of the site? And she begrudgingly admitted yes, that the, the redevelopment plan was designed to stop Home Depot from coming to Bellville.
I don't believe he said "designed." I think he said, "would a Home Depot be allowed to do?" And she said, "no." Uh, don't, don't add your, your commenting that she said...
Six of one, heaven does not...
The reason why it was designed was for that. That, that, that's your editorial conduct there. You don't need that.
Let me just continue. We'll see, we'll see about this. Now, during the planning board meeting, they spent the, the majority of the 30 minutes talking about the 29 permitted uses in the BB zone, BB1 zone. The primary interest of the party, the planning board during this hearing was to limit, to whittle down the 29 permitted uses. So, in a de facto way, what the planning board did on November 10th was change the zoning for the BB1 zone. They, they restrict, they took the 20...
That's not what happened at all. This is a redevelopment plan that overlays that particular lot. They did not touch or edit the zone.
Did you or did you not reduce the number of permitted uses from 29 to a smaller subset?
It's no longer in that zone. It's in a redevelopment zone.
It's still a BB1 zone.
No, it's not. It's, it's not included in that zone anymore. You know this, Mr. Sheldon. You said this on the board.
The, 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 the planning report still acknowledges it's in a BB1 zone.
The property itself is in a BB zone. Once the redevelopment plan is enacted, it now has its own zoning attached to that.
That's after, if this body approves this. At this current moment, it's still...
But we are not changing the BB zone at all. You can't say that. It's not factually correct.
At this moment, before you take a vote, is the Kmart property in the BB1 zone?
Yes.
Good, right. So the zoning for the BB1 zone, at this particular moment in time, still applies?
Yes.
Right, so that was my point.
We're taking it out of the BB zone. We're not changing the BB zone.
Right, but, but regardless...
Regardless, that's the whole point of your argument.
You had a discussion about, about changing zoning, moving the property out of the zone.
Yes, not changing the zone.
Now, I brought, I've read along the Cox manual, but I'm gonna defer the discussion of the relevant statutes and how you may be statutorily in violation of municipal annus procedure by having zoning changes, but without proper notice, without a public hearing. I'll let Mr. Frant and Tony just carry out that discussion in a few moments. All right. So let me continue on, just getting a little partied here again, as you know.
You would be less partied if you asked the question that we could answer. I guarantee that.
Right. All right, so what it seems to be, when you look at all the facts in total, what's going on here is a power play to stop Home Depot from developing the site to coming to Belville. Now, I know from my sources that Home Depot was definitely about to break ground on that property. In fact, I'm not gonna divulge names to my sources because I will protect them to my last breath, but there was actually a site plan distributed amongst the necessary parties in this building. There was a site plan where Home Depot had shown that they were going to raise the existing Kmart building, which only has a square footage, by the way, about 80,000 square feet. The average Home Depot in the United States has a square footage of about 105,000 square feet. So the Kmart building as it stands would not be adequate for a Home Depot. So what was Home Depot's remedy? They were going to demolish the existing Kmart building, put up a new building that would run parallel to Stevens Street. And if you look at the maps that I've given you, the largest dimension of the Kmart property is the dimension running parallel to Stevens Street. That's over 600, I think it's 605 feet in length. So they were going to put a brand-new store, giving themselves sufficient square footage to have a regular Home Depot store. And then they were going to put in a multi-level parking garage for its customers--
Mr. Sheldon--
Right.
I have to stop you. You have to ask a question about this ordinance, not tell us everything that we already know.
Right, well, I'm meeting up to that.
Got to be a question. You can't stand here all night and just testify. You can speak for five minutes later during a public comment. What are your questions about this ordinance?
I'm getting to that.
You're gonna get to it really quick because you're gonna be out of time.
The fact of the matter is, is that what's happening here is a calculated plan to stop Home Depot--
You've said that. Noted.
Home Depot would represent a huge boon to this township. Not only would it no longer require Belville residents from having to go to Bloomfield or Clifton to those Home Depots--
Mr. Sheldon--
But it would bring hundreds of--
At this point, I have to stop you, Mr. Sheldon.
No, I'm almost finished.
You have not asked a question about this ordinance. This is not the time for that. What are your questions on this ordinance? You have one.
Yes, I do.
If not, I'm gonna ask you to sit down so somebody else can speak--
You're stopping, interrupting me.
And give all your comments during public commenting.
No, I want, this is the time to talk about this ordinance, this matter. So let me just finish. I'm almost done. So instead of having a huge ratable with the production of hundreds of potential jobs for Belville residents, instead, you're in a deliberate, politically calculated strategy, you're going to split this block up into four small blocks. Now, I know for a fact that--
Question on the ordinance, Mr. Sheldon.
Before Home Depot came into this picture, a very well-known business owner in this township made an unsuccessful bid to acquire that property. And it is my speculation that what's gonna happen is if you go forward with this plan, those four blocks are going to either all together or individually be turned over to Team Melon, politically connected developer benefactors. Mark my words, that's what's gonna ultimately happen here. This is a completely ill-advised, politically necessitated plan on your part, Mr. Melon.
Your comments are on the record.
I have been told by my key sources that a bit too very recently, both Mr. Cazarelli and Mr. Graziano were completely in favor of Home Depot coming to Belville. But we'll see once again--
Who's that source again, so we're--
I don't tell you my sources. But mark my words, I have, I, you may think that you're beloved in this building, but believe me--
Mr. Sheldon, I need you to stay on the ordinance or please sit down.
Well, we'll see in a few moments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sheldon, I'm gonna ask you to sit down.
I have 30 more seconds.
Somebody else can speak.
What we're going to see in a few moments is once again who the true master is for the members of this governing body.
Mr. Sheldon, you don't want our comments on this ordinance. I ask you to sit down. Anybody else for public comments on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Please do the right thing or change everyone and--
Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll detain you. We got one. Mr. Frant Antoni.
Good evening, Mr. Frant Antoni, my prospect, there. First of all, Mr. Mayor, with a public hearing, not an ordinance--
On the minute, Tom.
It's not only questions. You can also make comments. So don't keep telling people, just answer your question, questions. You're allowed to make comments in regards to this project. Now, this, it's a bad plan to begin with. And I believe Councilman Rovell and the Tarry vote on no. Councilman Burkley, you voted no. The problem with just voting no, you should have spoken up boldly the reasons why and let the public strongly know why you were opposed to this. So tonight, we'll see how you vote, but I hope you make your, it known there. This is, first of all, it's an idiotic plan. You're gonna have two new streets 60 feet wide. I mean, that's wider than Washington Avenue is at all. I don't understand it.
You don't understand it, Mr. Frant Antoni. It's not a street. It's a pedestrian walkway.
Why would you call it street on the plan? All right? I think I know how to read, so would you? Whoever drew up the thing--
Pedestrian walkways are also streets. It's being utilized as a pedestrian walkway. Not that that's gonna change your mind, I just want to educate you on.
You needed 60-foot-wide pedestrian walkway?
No, actually, if you read the plan, it's 30 feet wide, and it's 30 feet of landscape.
And even so, you need 30 feet for that?
Okay, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Are vehicles gonna be allowed on these streets?
No. Continue, please. I'm just trying to answer, but clearly they don't want the answer. Continue, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Well, no, because you don't even let a question be completed before you answer--
I'm answering your question.
You gotta understand, why don't you watch the tape? Watch the tape of your own planning board meeting on November 10th. It was such a fiasco. Your stenographer had to tell you all to shut up. You were like a bunch of cackling hens talking over each other. She couldn't take a transcript properly.
On this ordinance, Mr. Frant Antoni.
And you're doing the same thing now.
Please keep your comments on the--
Wait till a question is completely answered, Mayor.
Speak on this--
You do this all the time because you don't want to hear it. You don't want to be trapped in your own contradictions.
Frant Antoni, this is not the bash the mayor moment. This is questions or comments on this ordinance.
Yeah, well, I'm telling you, this is ludicrous to divide this up like that. And you, response to Mr. Sheldon there, you said about the amending it, you changed these 29 items, health business, lap church, brewery, retail, and so on and so forth, all these things. So you're amending this thing. According to the Cox book, when you amend an ordinance, you have to hold a public hearing.
We're not amending--
You just said it before. You just said it before and answered to Mr. Grav. We're just amending it. All right? So you gotta be careful what you say.
We're not just so the public knows, we are not amending any ordinance to the zone. We're not amending the zone. We're not doing that.
As you speak, I write down the words. And you said amending it to Mr. Sheldon, right? And by changing all the uses in there, that's an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And it requires a public hearing.
That would be the case if that's what we're doing, but we're not doing that. We're creating a redevelopment plan citing the uses. We're not amending the BB zone.
That's the other thing.
Thank you. You agree with me? Thank you, Chair of the Zone Board. Thank you.
The, in your ordinance, it says, "A large majority of our housing stock is over 50 years old. A majority of water and sewer lines within the township are at least 50 years old and need us to stand through repair and maintenance." The question is, what's that got to do with this individual property, which is an existing store in good condition? There's no problems with the store, it's just that the corporation vacated the use of it for their retail use there. So why is it all that about our sewers and everything else? What's that got to do with creating this area in need of redevelopment? So you're just--
It's not an area in need of redevelopment either, Mr. Frant Antoni. It's an area in need of rehabilitation. There's two different statutes.
But that's again what you said before. You're redeveloping the property. You've gotta be careful with your words.
I give up.
It's an area, you say it's an area, the whole town's in area rehabilitation, but then you said it's a redevelopment plan. And it says in here, redevelopment, in your own ordinance that you're gonna vote on tonight is the word area in need of redevelopment. And now you're telling--
It does not say-- The ordinance does not say area in need of redevelopment. Where does it say that, Mr. Frant Antoni?
It's a redevelopment plan.
It's not an area in need of rehabilitation.
Those are two different things. An area in need of redevelopment and a redevelopment plan are two different things. They're not the same. It does not say area in need of redevelopment. It's an area in need of rehabilitation, which you're allowed to have a redevelopment plan in. That's what's happening here.
All right, so why, was this requested by any potential buyer?
No.
All right, so why are we doing? Why don't you just let the owner of the property sell it to whoever he wants and apply for whatever they want to do with the property to our officials in town? And let that take its property? Why are we interfering with a private owner?
I don't think we're interfering with private owner. I think that either the planning board or the redevelopment team and our planners, we have a master plan, and we'd always look at large parcels, see what the best use could be.
Well, it's wrong. And this has gotta stop. You know, all this stuff interfering with private property is not the way to go. And it's a bartering of town.
Thank you.
And this is, it's crazy. In fact, a big corporate in Maual is being sued because they interfered and created a redevelopment plan on their property without letting them know.
Thank you.
So you gotta stop this stuff and let's get some common sense. So I hope--
Anybody else public commenting on this ordinance?
Before, I hope you will speak up the reasons why you voted against it.
Thank you. Ms. Fleischman.
Good evening, Pamela Fleischman, 33, Main Street. I'm kind of afraid to talk because I think it's a good idea. I don't think--
You're not in the minority, by the way. Maybe on that side of the room, but you're not in the minority.
I don't think, I mean, Kmart was there for years and, you know, you developed, you know, the town developed around it. I think a box store, whatever it is, Kmart, Home Depot, whatever it is, I don't think it fits into that little area anymore. I think it would be cute to see four tinier stores, you know, small business. It's a rare, small town, you know, so you want to try to keep local, small businesses. I'd rather see four businesses in as opposed to one.
With pedestrian walkway? With, if you notice the plan, all the green, because there's a lot of residential that butts all that. And all that green is berms and actually protects the new residential units that are there from all the commercials there.
And frankly, we're surrounded by Home Depots. We don't need a, we're between Clifton and Bloomfield.
This is not about a particular store. This is about a type of use, actually.
Yeah, like I said, I think it's a good plan, so like I said, thank you.
Anybody else public commenting?
Yes, I have a simple question.
Do you want to come up and take the mic or?
I could say it from here because I got a loud voice.
Sure.
And the question is, in this redevelopment plan, is residential allowed?
No.
No. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have all questions.
Nice.
Now, I want to get a better understanding of, I've been listening to what everybody's saying, across thousand stuff, so I don't-- I still-- Why would the town pay CME to do a study on a private piece of property? And how much did we pay for it? That's question number one.
Every single study we've ever done, the town pays for. And it's always private property. As I said earlier to Mr. Sheldon, we don't own property that we've ever studied. So it's been happening for years, even before me. The exact dollar amount, I do not know.
Okay. So if you're going to do that, shouldn't the owner of the property be notified, possibly?
Sometimes they work with us, sometimes they don't work with us, sometimes they cooperate.
Okay, but in this case-- But in this case, were they notified?
That I do not know. We do have Dean on the phone, though. I don't know if there's a notice--
Unless you want to--
Is Dean still here?
I'm here.
Dean, in a redevelopment plan that's on a, in an area in need of rehabilitation, does the property owner get notified?
Well, in this instance, the townwide area in need of rehabilitation--
What's the notice?
Was done by the planning board, and it was at a publicly noticed hearing, which declared the retired town, including the former Kmart properties, as an area of rehabilitation.
So that would have been the notice?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no requirement that each property owner within the town be noted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so now my next question is, based on the photo of the property, how is being divided? What confuses me is, are they going to be four separate blocks or?
No.
No, one part of the question, you can answer it one time. So based on what I'm looking at, you're creating a street in there. Who's gonna be responsible for putting that street in there? But that's gonna be owned by one person or four individual owners?
So that's a very valid question. And thank you for a valid question, actually. It does say that it is the Ralph Street extension, because Ralph Street does-- But in the plan, if you read the details of the plan, it's actually a pedestrian walkway. It's not a through street. It's not a street, so there's no underlying infrastructure underneath it. It's basically a walkway for pedestrians. So if you go to any other town that has maybe restaurants and stuff like that in smaller streets and they kill the street off--
I've seen that.
Then you walk through. Belville might actually, if this plan works, Belville might actually have something where pedestrians can actually walk through a street.
So that's, it's not a street? They're gonna dig up and put--
No.
Infrastructure in it? Okay, that's that. Based on Mr. Martino's comment, I understood what you said. You're going to be, even though it's rehabilitation, you're looking at a rehabilitation area for possible redevelopment. So that does not fall under a redevelopment plan? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
It falls under a redevelopment plan. It's a redevelopment plan. It doesn't fall under an area of need of rehabilitation.
That's the key word, I think, right there.
You could have, you can have an area in need of rehabil-- An area--
I know.
In need of redevelopment and an area in need of rehabilitation. They can, who wants? So you could have an area of redevelopment--
But I think you, the one word, the one word you pointed out was need, which I was looking for.
Correct.
That's what I was looking for, okay. My question is, another one here. How did this come about? Who decided? Who turned around and said, "I have this idea"? How did this come about? Somebody had to bring this CME in and say, "We're looking to redevelop that."
So again, it's a valid question, unlike--
Somebody had to come up with the idea. Here, one person has to have the idea, and you bring it to other people and everybody say, yes. So who's the one person?
So I'm gonna explain it to you. So unlike what's happened for decades before, we now have a redevelopment team, myself, Deputy Mayor's on it, Councilman Cazarelli's on it, all of our redevelopment professionals. We sit every single month and talk about existing projects, pending projects, and large parcels of vacant land. Once Home Depot vacated and we noticed that tractor-trailers were using it as a truck stop, we immediately acted to make sure that wasn't gonna happen anymore. So that became identified as a empty piece of property. Nobody brought in CME. CME's sitting at the table, because they are our planners. Every single time that we have a meeting, they're there. So it was decided that we should ask them to do a study and come up with a plan.
Okay, another question here. I'm looking at the permitted use and the-- Prohibitive, but what caught my eye is something that I mentioned here. What caught my eye is something that I mentioned here. Because when the Kmart property came up about a year ago, nobody decided, nobody knew what was going to happen with that property. And I still remember my com, standing here making my comment. I said, "Don't be surprised if somehow that doesn't become a cultivation or possible cannabis place." I think I'm on the money on that one because it is a conditional use. So I said it a year ago, that's probably going to happen.
So I think it's a conditional use because that is a use in the entire Valley section anyway, so that makes sense.
But I'm just telling you that I'm right, I predicted it. Another thing here, it's almost finished. Just one, one page here.
I also remember while you're looking through that, I also remember 20 years ago, sitting up here in the council and the Finkelstein, the Walter Kitty site for 24 acres, there was going to be a Lowe's and a Target.
Right, right.
And that never panned out.
Right, that's exactly right.
That never panned out and that property continued to be vacant until about a year ago.
Yeah, just on page 11 of the report, so when you go back to CMA, CME, just let them know, they're talking about loading spaces, okay? And what caught my eye, being in the trucking business for 32 years, 12 feet wide is fine, 15 feet high is fine. 45 foot trailer, average trailer without a tractor is 53 feet. With a cab, you're talking 65, 70 feet long, so I think they need a correction in there.
They may or may not.
No, because if you look at somebody's containers, well, somebody's offloading a container there, that container alone is 53 feet now.
But if it's not a big box and it's a smaller use, it might get different.
Well, you're not going to, because you've got a guy coming in over the road making a delivery from out of state. He's got this long thing, it's about 70 feet long. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, anybody else in this or this or it's only? Hearing, no, we got one.
Bill, Bill in Humble Street, just wanted to know if Home Depot was interested in this property at all?
I heard Home Depot, I heard, I heard, what was that Christmas store thing?
Christmas tree shops.
Yeah, it's a, it's currently a big box, there's a lot of retailers that are interested.
I've been inquiring about different people in the neighborhood, the past week, maybe 20. They always looked at this Home Depot instead of going to Clifton or Blueville.
No, thank you.
No, just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Anybody else in this or this or it's only? Hearing none, I'll have to send a motion to close for final adoption. Close and move, we have a motion made.
Motion.
Ten second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made, ten seconds to close and move for final adoption.
I want to comment.
If you want discussion, we have discussion now.
Yes, I want to talk. Hi, Carmella, I understand your desire for that box, but to me, having a Home Depot in Belville, having 100 jobs, having the capability of that rateable and the convenience. You know, we don't even have a hardware store in Belville anymore, which at one point in time, we had three or four of them. So anytime I need to buy hardware, something, I got to leave town.
But if I can get that, she'll shut it.
Oh, now she wants a big box, Italian Pacific box. So, you know, that was my thing and I don't want to preclude Home Depot. And the reality is, yeah, we had a shot at Lowe's in 2008, we ended up in a depression and it killed that. And that stinks, I mean, I think that would have been advantageous to this community.
There's no precluding, so if a Home Depot wants it, they can go to either zoning or planning and/or we can change the plan. Anybody else, John?
You make sense too, Carmella, it's a matter of opinion. I just like the big box store, I think that Kmart worked here for many years. I liked what he just said, by the way, the Christmas tree store, that'd be fantastic. I just, I like the big box stores, Best Buy, and I think it has worked here for many years. And what you said made sense too, I mean, and what everybody tonight said made sense, it's just a matter of opinion on this one.
My mother wants a Home Goods and Home Goods is a smaller footprint and it might very well work. I mean, you know, retail is dying and as planners, as people have looked to the future, we, you know, big boxes are drying up. There's a reason why Kmart had a business, everybody. The big boxes are not working, yet the smaller storefronts that are right next to it on Main Street seem to be working. So the big box stores don't seem to be working, anybody else?
Yeah.
Home Depot's thriving, so.
Christmas tree stores, that makes it a big box.
Depends on the size, they're not the same size. They're not the same size.
They're not the same size, but there's also, there's not a ton of Christmas tree shops. Like you go like nationwide, there's Home Depots, you know, Christmas tree shops.
And we're not precluding, they can come in, they can still come in. We could amend this plan for a Home Depot, if we wanted a really nice Home Depot, we could amend the plan and...
The issue was... So in my discussions with, we did, I was in a meeting that we did speak with Home Depot, very briefly, very brief discussion. They, I have a contracting company, right, I'm at Home Depot every day. Would I love a Home Depot 10 feet from my house? Absolutely. However, what they wanted to do was knock down the building, which is good because then we'll get a building permit. However, they were going to increase the size of the building by almost 30%, which goes into the parking lot, so you're going to take a third of the parking lot and add it to the building. Then they were going to put a garden center in roughly a third of that parking lot space. So your parking lot is now a third of what it is now, but they were going to build a parking deck. However, also, there was going to be nowhere for the trucks to pull in. The trucks either had to pull in and back out onto the street or back in and then pull out onto the street. Either way, that was going to cause a disaster down there on a busy street. So if they were going to shrink their plan a little bit, I would have been for a Home Depot if they were going to shrink it. However, they wanted to expand it, I wasn't okay with that.
And you and I and everybody else would be willing to entertain that and can still entertain that in the future. And I just don't want your comments about councilmen to be...
That's only personal, that's personal.
Oh, no, I want them to be misconstrued. What was presented to us was a basically rendering.
Right.
There was no site plan contrary to what you heard here by little birdies and sources. There was no site plan, there's no site plan, thank you, anybody else commenting?
No, and I agree with Councilman Cazarelli because now you have the traffic studies that had to go along with it and then you're going to sit up here and get beat up to say, "Hey, did anybody do traffic study? And there's traffic here and then something else happens here." But again, as we know, things evolve here in the world. And with that said, we see how the economy is, we see more things online. We see how shopping is done elsewhere, we are a community, we're small. We're opening two doors, we're just not boxed into one box. We're, like the mayor said, we have an option here and we can always go back to a second option. So it opens everything up, right? We're not being boxed in, we're opening our minds for the town to go.
Thank you, no pun. Okay, there was a motion on table, I'm sorry, we have Councilwoman Depena, anything?
Nothing at this moment.
Thank you, we have a motion made and seconded, so I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
No, no.
Robel.
No.
Mr. Wilburk.
No.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Orders approved.
Orders on the table, stay.
Yes.
Need a motion open public commenting?
Motion.
We have a motion made and seconded, open public commenting, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Wilburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes, we are now open for public commenting. Jones, just going to ask you to come forwards, take your name and address to the record. You have five minutes, we ask you to please try to keep your comments on township business or township questions. We've got four minutes today. All right.
Just a question, on the World Cup, who sponsored that event? That's my question.
Depends on what type of sponsorship you're talking about, paid sponsorship?
No, no, because for the town to absorb the cost, who sponsored it?
Town didn't absorb the cost, I paid $5,000 for the TV. We had a $1,000 sponsor, we had a couple $250 sponsors, the township provided police and some DPW to pick up the car.
The reason I brought that up is because it was, you know, I had conflicting comments making me. Somebody said the town sponsored it, somebody said used town sponsored it. So your billboard, the billboard has your name on it.
And the town's name on it.
Well, logo, not the town name, logo, it's a logo. What's that behind you?
It's got my logo and the township logo on it.
No, just look at it.
That's a logo.
Yeah, that's the logo behind you, look behind you, same logo.
I know the logo, the township, there is...
Logo, so who sponsored it then? Four people, how many people sponsored it?
Mr. Jones, I just explained to you who sponsored it, you want to hear it again?
Yeah, I want to hear it again.
I spent $5,000.
You spent $5,000?
Me, my civic association, that's the logo you see there. The other logo you see there was the township, township spent no money but provided police and DPW. We also had a $1,000 sponsor and a couple $250 sponsors.
So, so did you provide the insurance in case somebody got hurt or anything like that?
No, we're on town property school.
Yeah, but you should, but you're not...
Okay, Mr. Jones.
I'm asking you a question, why can't we just talk? Listen, all I'm saying is if you're as a private organization, you have to have... But the reason I brought that up is because years ago, back in the late 80s, 90s, we used to do the Columbus Day parade, we used to do the carnival. And what happened there was they made us get insurance, they made us pay for our own cops and everything. That's the reason I'm bringing it up.
Township was the sponsor, which is why I didn't have to pay for the cops, the township sponsored it. And township has insurance.
You have resolution number four. Now, going back to resolution number four, that is the property that is being designated as an area in need of redevelopment, correct? Resolution number four. Is that correct?
Two more questions in there.
Yeah, that's the Cazarelli building and all the other buildings, am I correct?
Yeah, but we're appointing the planner to study it.
Right.
Not to do it, we're not doing it.
No, that's what I'm asking, so that's the property, that's what we're talking about. So we hire in another planner to study it, even though you were already, didn't you designate it as an area in need of redevelopment? Or you, that building, one of the buildings?
We did that, it went to the planning board, planning board approved that, agreed with that recommendation, came to us. Now we have to hire a planner to actually do the plan, study the plan. The study has not happened yet, no, I think we're, we passed a resolution, that resolution went to the planning board. Planning board agreed with it, sent it back to us, now we engage a planner to actually do the study and come up with a plan. That's all paid for by the owner of the property.
But again, I'm going to bring up the same thing, when I looked at all the property, still the old private developers, let them pay for it first.
They do.
Who's that asked?
They're going to pay for all the study, they always do. I just want to make sure, they always do, all I have to say.
You will?
I think what we just paid. This plan, I guess paid by us, right?
That one, yes. Mr. Frantantoni, he's talking about area in need of redevelopment, not area in need of development.
If they ask for it, they, if we ask for it, we back.
Yes, the last meeting I brought up publicly about the crossing guard situation and parking in bus stops in an illegal zone. The very next morning, that was corrected. I want to thank the chief and...
However.
I promise him a caveat, but, but, it's just, the thing is, I tried to do it for a year, year and a half privately. It's a shame that I had to come publicly to get it done.
Shame sometimes works.
But that's good, so they, it's two weeks, both Union Avenue and, right, Droualman and Union and the middle school have been fine, they've been fine, thank you. In regards to things, Mr. Mayor, you're on your site and all that, you're bragging all over that. Your civic association is going to do this soccer event and all that. And all of a sudden now, oh, the town's doing, but I passed it, I don't think, I think you expected a few thousand, which honestly, I thought with the billboard advertisement, you would. You had about 80, 90 people there from my county or front of ours.
Your town is way wrong.
The, but, who, the police hall, you had about six cops, you had about five vehicles there, you had the traffic truck there, the traffic, you had DPW, you had the Board of Education Security there and other entities from the Board of Ed. That's a lot of money the taxpayers paid for and you brag on your site and all over. Your civic association did it. So what about paying for some of these police that had to work that day?
I just find it interesting that all the great events that we do in this town, the last two comments were about how I paid for and why the police department shouldn't be there, DPW shouldn't be there, because of the garbage. I mean, Mr. Frantantoni, I got to be, how about you come to an event once in a while? How about you come to some of these great events that we throw? Rather than come up here and just complain about, and I didn't, the township didn't pay any money out of their pocket. I paid for the screen, which is the most expensive part, $6,500, I paid $5,000 of that. But really, you're going to be here and you're going to complain about that? It was a wonderful event for the township, we have a huge soccer population here in this township and you're here to complain about it? I mean, that's, Mr., how about you show up to an event once in a while, Mr. Frantantoni?
Mr. Mayor, okay, the Concerned Citizens of Belville, Reed Man event for 22 years, we gave scholarships.
I've been there for five years, I've never seen you at one event, Mr. Frantantoni.
I'm talking about the Concerned Citizens of Belville. If you would shut your mouth and open your ears, maybe you would do a little better, you would understand what's going on there, right? For 22, 23 years, the Concerned Citizens of Belville did events after events, with scholarships, we awarded, people thinks, never a penny, never asked for a cop to show up anywhere, we paid for everything ourselves. So, don't tell me that, but you've got to...
When was the last time you did an event?
Yes, about 10 years ago.
Thank you.
Right?
Sometimes you need cooperation of the township to keep going.
So where were you for 22 years when we were doing all these events, all right? But we're sick and tired, we've taken all these things and using town resources and town employees to do your events.
My event.
And we, well, you're the one that braves about it.
Just because I promote it on social media, that doesn't mean it's a me. There are a lot of sponsors for this event, a lot of sponsors.
There are a lot of sponsors, but you're the guy that breaks my Better Belville group, my group.
I think I'm allowed $55,000 for an event and I think I'm allowed to promote that event.
I told you once before, you're a narcissist and you're going to fall, sooner or later.
I'm waiting, it's been five years, anybody else in public commenting? Mr. Sheldon. Got a lot more votes in this last election I did four years ago, so something's going right, Mr. Frantantoni.
You're buying them with our tax dollars.
Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Flay Street, I'll be much quicker this time around. I know the town hall is closed, obviously, Thursday and Friday because of Thanksgiving. My question, to the chair, to Mr. Iaccone, will the DPW be working this weekend as they have for all these recent weeks? The reason I ask is that there's still leaves to gather and I just wanted to know if I should bother doing anything over the next few days or wait until next week?
So the answer to your question is definitely Saturday and Sunday we'll have a full probe. On Friday, we probably have two people just doing Washington air.
Okay, all right, thank you, so I may put out a few more leaf bags. Well, I'm generally despised by most of the folks in this room. As far as my neighbors are concerned, you know, I'm pretty well beloved because I, you know, I do everything I can to take care of their properties as well, I've gone through so far this season alone, probably upwards of 51 leaf bags, just helping my neighbors and keeping my section of Floyd Street clean. I wanted to just also confirm that while the town hall is closed, Thursday and Friday, there'll be garbage pickup on Friday?
On Friday, not Thursday.
Friday is a very good garbage day, Thursday there is no garbage.
Okay, all right, very good, just want to make sure.
Come on upstairs.
All right. I noticed, I was trying to find the image of the Amity Mayor, just to confirm your check is a match, but I can't get online. I noticed you have an access point in this room, which is label double wifi, yes. Is that password available or do you have to operate or?
I'm sure if it's guest, it's available.
Yeah, I would hope so, because I never can get online in this room, it seems to be blocked off, so, you know, if there is...
I got it, I don't.
We should find it and post it, I mean, it's a guest account.
Or reset.
The mayor, you know it, do you know?
It's a guest account.
Now you know the password for it.
I don't use it, so I don't know.
You can do that and have it reset.
All right, thank you.
I'll find out today.
Let's see.
We should post it.
I, once again, I know, you know, I'm beating the dead horse here, but I keep asking for the sake of completeness with the iCompass system, the July 1st and the July 12 meeting agenda packets are still missing from iCompass. You know, there are a few of us, the crazies here, that do a lot of research with the agendas. Could you please make the effort before this year is out to get those two missing agenda packets on iCompass? Earlier tonight, there was a discussion about, the town is finally moving forward with water line replacements. When you had sent out a list earlier this year, I believe, of homes that you suspected had lead lines, my house was on that list, but in the early 1980s, at my own expense, the lead line was replaced with copper. So I hope that before you show up with, you know, digging equipment and start doing excavation, you do, you know, make sure that that home actually has lead and not, has replaced it with copper so you're not wasting lots of resources. But, you know, I want you to please note that my house has got copper, if you want a picture of it, I'll send it to you. The last thing I wanted to acknowledge, I noticed today, one of the police vehicles was out with the pain machine for the curbs, the yellow curb, they marked, they striped the curbs by Little Street and Floyd, which is great, but of course, 10 minutes after the curbs were painted yellow, cars were already parking back in those areas, you know. But if I understand the law correctly, just because a curb is painted yellow, doesn't necessarily mean you can't park there. It sort of is a warning that if you park here, be aware of the fact that if you're then within 50 feet of a stop sign or 25 feet of a crosswalk or 10 feet of a fire hydrant, you can then quickly ticket it. But just having a yellow curb doesn't mean that you can't necessarily park there. But I do hope that the town, the police department ups their enforcement of parking rules because especially in my area, on that Little Street Floyd intersection, there's, that's one of the main... uh, Floyd intersection, there's, that's one of the main emergency roads for the township. And usually cars are parked right up to the intersection. And there have been times when I've come within inches of having head-on collision as I'm trying to make a turn off of Floyd Street onto Little, so... Thank you and, uh, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? Hearing none. I'll attend to him. Wait, wait, wait. The Arcane was, was hiding behind the chief's head.
What I'm supposed to say? Come on.
I wouldn't do salt.
What are you trying to say?
I love this stuff. Come on, you know, come on. Say, wait, I don't have that money this week.
I don't need it anymore.
Well, you made very, very many, truly, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. with the chair, Mr. Iacano, last meeting, I had left a, a question about the, excuse me, the cleanup on Main. I know you've been working with the state and things like that. Have you gotten any response or are they just like saying like, oops, never got the email?
Maybe I spoke to Meredith, one of our contacts, and that was maybe three, four weeks ago. That was the last contact that we had.
Three, four weeks ago.
Yeah, it's...
It's crazy.
It's gotten a little nicer, but it's, it still needs some work to go.
I'll let, there's a, there's a TV I just saw the other day.
Well, that's, if it's television, that's, that's most reach out. I think it's there. That won't let us know. We'll, we'll get it. If you tell me there's a television in today, I can tell you that'll be gone tomorrow.
Fine, I'm telling you that tonight, there's a television there today. Uh, and also I started to see that the lovely town started decorating for Christmas a little too early, in my opinion. But that's okay. Um, are there going to be wreaths in my neck of the woods on Main and/or my old neck of the woods, Silver Lake? Because that, those two parts of the Belleville always seem to be forgotten about. Oops. Why? Is it, is it just, is it...
Maybe Councilwoman Burke could explain? No? Okay.
Is it just where, like where I live? Like I'm not allowed to go to Christmas.
So I think we do that on Washington Avenue.
Right, but also, you know, on Main, it is a business, because I thought they were kind of promote businesses and things like that. There are businesses on Main Street. There are businesses over on Franklin. You know, I've been asked in the last couple of years for that, so maybe we'd make that happen?
We have to make it happen in the capital budget. I know we did it a couple of years back. You'd be shocked to know how expensive that, those decorations are and how poorly lit they are because of the LED lights. Everybody says they're too dim. Uh, we did move, I thought, the older ones, the Silver Lake. Uh, but it's just, gotta put it in the capital budget. Gotta buy all new stuff.
I, I would appreciate it. Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion to close public commenting.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to close public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena.
Yes.
Brazziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes, got you. Uh, do we have anybody on the phone? This phone on? E.
E.
Does E go there?
We have no public on this one?
I'm here, no public comment.
Okay, so we have consent agenda. Uh, I'm gonna take off items nine to 10.
Four, four.
I just got a question on E.
Question on what?
E.
Question on E. Yes, I had many questions on E. Uh, maybe you missed the meeting that we had when it was explained? No. We never had a meeting when it was explained. That's why I had a question.
Excuse me, okay.
Sarcasm tonight, Mayor.
When, when, when you see the resolution, it says police, you want it just, yeah, we're just yeses on that one.
You'd be wise to do so, yeah.
Uh, so Deputy Mayor has a valid question, I'm sure.
Yeah, just because I see the resolution, it's good. Uh, so it looks like we're outs. This, this function is going to somebody differing.
It's gonna be outsourced.
It's gonna be outsourced.
Deputy Mayor, yes.
And we're not paying for it.
Absolutely not.
So that means, so that means, which I commended, we're freeing up time from somebody doing this job.
Yes.
So that means...
And a lot of headings, actually, it's...
Is there still second or is there still payment being made to that person?
Yeah, the person's gonna be the liaison, so yeah. Nothing's changed.
I wasn't going in, I was going to...
But absolutely nothing's changed. As far as that's concerned, all the monies that the town gets.
I was looking at responsibility, so this is another person going back on the street?
Yes. Not, not necessarily on the street, but it does free them up. It frees me up.
Freezes them.
Freezes a lot of, there's a lot of work involved in hiring for the traffic, uh, jobs and, and...
And it has nothing to do with deep...
... security.
And it has nothing to do with deep ordinance.
But more importantly, Deputy Mayor, more importantly, it, it's recommended by our auditors.
Okay.
Every year, I was the last town to hold out going.
Okay.
I like local patrol, but...
And it's different?
It, it's all legal legalities with paying the officers. You know, you're not allowed to use township funds to do so until you get reimbursed. But this company will take care of all that and it freezes legally.
Zip, zip, zip.
It's zip, zip, it freezes legally.
No, good, no, because I looked at the ordinance support before that we approved.
Yeah, the resolution is for the township, Mayor, to sign the contract and the ordinance is actually spells it out.
On a detail. So, okay, so what did it say?
That's why your resolution is for, uh, to an agreement, the way the mayor can sign the contract and the ordinance is, spells out the legalities of it. Um, and we, I don't know if you noticed also, we work out of towns sometimes. A lot of towns ask us to work.
Yeah.
And again, this cleans it up legally, makes it all legal with the auditors.
No, I was only looking at the...
Never had a heart attack every year, or whatever. Why are you going to Montclair? You know, we don't have the ordinance for that, so this cleans it all up.
I was only looking at it from boots on the ground, right? So what happens is if we, we, we help.
Not really, doesn't work that way. Not work that way.
Okay, don't work that way. Okay. Just a question. Thank you.
But the 8% fee though, uh, with Township's not paying it, uh, it's not coming out of the police officer's pocket. It's a good service charge added on to the, uh, end user.
I see outsour, I see outsources from my world. I see dollar savings. That's why I'm like that.
Right, no.
Well, I'm gonna call them the same, but it's definitely not cost us anything.
Cool. Thank you, Chief.
That's it. Uh, so we have three resolutions. We have, I, I made phone calls as I read my packet. And the manager answered them and then the chief called me. Uh, and then we had a discussion and, uh...
I wish I had more time with you.
Well, I actually reviewed my packet. Anybody else? We have four. We have nine and 10. That's it. I'll attend to motion move consent agenda.
So moved, thank you.
We have a motion made and second to move consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Brazziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes. Uh, resolution number four. Just gonna move it. Oh, wait a minute, is that? Okay, resolution number four. Need to just, uh, go a call.
Move it in the second.
Oh, we don't have to be dependent. Anybody move it? I need a move. Need a second? Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.